Reading our thought and then the pledge. Jeff Acerson will give us a prayer and then Johnny Ferry will lead us in the pledge.
Our gracious Father in heaven, we're grateful that we can meet in such political circumstances. We're thankful for the service of our elected officials and the staff and administration that conduct the affairs of this great county. We ask this day as that business is conducted that as participants will be mindful of the thought and dedication of our servants that we'll be able to discuss when it's appropriate. The concerns that come before the commission that will do it in a proper manner, that will be respectful and thoughtful in our comments and our questions that we ask. We pray also that we'll continue to lead out and be good servants of thee, that we'll represent thee in our interactions with the public, that we'll build good unity and community as we go forward with faith. And we say this in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Jeff?
All please rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Johnny and trustee Acerson. Okay, our first item is recognition of the June Employee of the Month.
I get to take this one, I'm excited. So, our employee of the month this month is Elizabeth Olstead. Elizabeth has been employee of Utah County for seventeen years and she is just an absolutely exemplary example of customer service. Everyone says that customer service going above and beyond and always going the extra mile comes naturally for her, that it is her standard of operation rather than the exception. They gave an example of a, of a couple who, an elderly couple who knew they needed something, but they weren't quite sure what they needed. They were very nervous about getting in their car and driving all the way to Provo, not even knowing what they needed, and they showed up and she was so helpful to them. And was patient and guided the conversation and spent time with them and was so kind, helping them find what they need, that they needed that, that the, the woman actually had tears in her eyes as she was saying thank you for being so kind and so compassionate. Elizabeth is a perfect example of it takes just as much time to be kind as it does to be rude, so choose kindness. And she's such a great example to everybody around her, always attentive and patient, gives personalized attention and is just dedicated to her job. It is an honor to get to recognize her and we are lucky that we have been able to keep her here at the county for seventeen years. So, come forward, thank you.
Take a picture with you down here and give you some stuff. We've got a certificate for the fridge at home.
Congratulations.
Eighteen years, fantastic.
Taraji Elizabeth, I think you've got pretty good support.
It's a fan base right there, it's a fan club.
Half the room empties out. The mass exodus, you're welcome to stay for the really exciting meeting.
No, they gotta get back to work.
Yeah, get back to work. Okay, thank you, thank you, congratulations. Alright, our work session, a presentation on something that's near and dear to all the commissioners' hearts, the Major Brent Taylor Foundation. We've been excited to welcome Johnny Ferry, so we'll, we'll let you take it away.
Thank you Commissioner, thank you for staff and members of the Utah County. I'm here, my name is Johnny Ferry. I'll do a quick introduction. I'm here on behalf of the Major Brent Taylor Foundation. The Major Brent Taylor Foundation got its start up in Weber County. Jenny Taylor is a dear friend of our family. Her husband, Major Brent Taylor, was killed in Afghanistan while active, as an active mayor of North Ogden at the time, and a member of the military. As Jenny later set up a foundation in honor of Brent, the goal of the foundation is working in the community, training, educating, and providing community service opportunities for the public. What I'd like to present on is an event that we have coming up called the Utah County Remembers 9/11. There are five parts to this that I'll explain as I get through the presentation that will make more sense. Number one, it's a community engagement event. This will be held at the Spanish Fork Fairgrounds and it'll be a walk-through interactive experience, educational, and a service showcase for those service organizations here in your community, as well as a professional career fair to honor police, fire, medical, and military members of your community in a tribute. Well, what is it all about? We've done this now, this is our fifth county and we've crossed the state here in Utah. I myself, I'm based out of, I live in Pleasant View, but, and as a profession, I'm in food manufacturing. This is just something that I'm on the board of the Major Brent Taylor Foundation and serve there as, as part of what I do. The event itself, we'll have a setup, we do this as a week-long event. So, we go, we build the event, consider it kind of a pop-up tribute museum to the events of 9/11. On Monday and Tuesday, we build it out. Wednesday, we kick it off for the public. We're free, it's all free to the public, you don't pay for it. It's nine AM to nine PM and we do this from Wednesday to Saturday, every day, and then we tear it down in two hours on Saturday night and we're out of here. This is the overview, just you can see, many of you are familiar with the fairgrounds, but in the yellow area that is represented on, on screen, that is where we will hold these actual events, where we have the exhibit. It's a walk-through exhibit, there's a thousand images, there's twenty-four video screens, and we showed the events, the pre-events of 9/11, the events of 9/11, and then the response to 9/11. It's a community engagement where we will bus in kids from the local community, ten thousand plus, who will get a chance, these are grade school, middle school, high school. Kids will get a walk-through, experience this, come back at night, bring your families, youth groups. It is very family-friendly and open to the public, like I said, free to the public. There is out in the parking lot a touch-a-truck event, so if you like to drive fire trucks, now is your opportunity. Let me explain what it is. This is an overview picture, this is an overview of the, the map of what you will walk through. It's an interactive experience, so each one of these squares represents a different image or a TV screen or a movie screen where we have on display the events of 9/11. An easier way to kind of show that is first to understand how it was built out, so I'll play this clip real quick.
The twentieth anniversary of the 9/11 attacks is just two weeks away.
Yeah, and while many of them were just babies when it happened, a group of Weber State students are helping create an impressive new memorial. Garna Mahia now takes us inside.
That's right, this exhibit comes at a very timely moment. Now, the creative minds behind it tells us it's not just an opportunity to teach the younger generation about September eleventh, but it's an opportunity to learn how to build where you are. We had no idea months ago what today would look like.
When Jenny Taylor speaks.
How important it would be to look at what a refugee is and why they might flee their own country.
It's from experience.
And how important today it would be to understand freedom and hope and sacrifice and service.
So, come on through here.
That's exactly what Taylor hopes these students will take away from today.
Grab one of those and move it down here.
The two-by-fours and screws.
It definitely worked the time.
Are quickly taking shape.
It felt like it was helping out some people, so it was fun.
This is the framework for the upcoming multimedia exhibit that will walk visitors through the events of September eleventh.
How it all started, like what happened.
Students like Ruben Romero were born after the 9/11 attacks.
It'd be good to learn a little bit more than what I know.
It's the humanity of it.
Taylor is co-chair of the first-ever Weber Remembers, the 9/11 project.
I'm gonna let it motivate me to never say never, to never forget.
She has been an advocate since her husband was killed in Afghanistan and hopes the project will help us all process where we go from here.
And to never even consider whether or not this is worth it. It has to be worth it.
If you want to be seen as powerful, respected, and confident.
What you see here was the framework, the building of what this event is. So, we, we work with your local tech college and we'll build out four hundred of those frames. All of these have been done through donations and then that framework becomes the, the way, the, the way that we walk through. So, let's go to the next video here and give you a better idea of what is it that we're building out. We're seeking, oh, sorry, let me click forward and try that, there we go. What we're building out here is what you see up on screen. It's a way to honor your local community, so those are those frames that you saw with images then set in those frames. And as you walk through, the lighting, the, the atmosphere is one solemn, but also it takes you back to how life was prior to 9/11. We're taking you through your county, all of the cities represented in your county, the state of Utah, to the world stage, which is New York. And then in the, in the corner of this exhibit is our subway tunnel, the walk-through, and just as sudden as 9/11 happened, you walk through the tunnel and there you see the first planes crashing into the buildings. All of you can remember, those who were old enough, remember where you were, what you were doing when, when those planes hit. This experience gives you an opportunity to walk up with loved ones or students or, or members of your community and say, I remember this, I remember this image, and this is why it's important to me. That's why we do this. It's to connect the generation that experienced the events of 9/11 with those that did not. All of my kids were too young to remember. This gives me an opportunity to do that for them. You can see here the build-out in total, there, like I said, over a thousand images, four hundred of these boards, plus our TVs and, and the, the movie screens. Alright, let me skip forward here. Give it a second. We did this, like I mentioned, this is the fifth county that we've been in. There is one more, one thing to, to point out. Your community, your county, will get an opportunity to display the, the history of your county, the, the images of what makes Utah County great. And that's what, that's what connects that, so as people walk through, they get a sense of community. This is just the opening as you walk through, this is where, in, in case we did it in Davis County, you guys would obviously be doing it here in Utah County. One more, one more quick video. One more time, there we go.
Hi, my name is Mackenzie. I'm a student at Leighton Elementary and we're here at the 9/11 memorial event. So, we started at the front with this little museum with pictures and photos, like you could learn about 9/11. We got to talk to a real firefighter from 9/11.
Well, I was in my, my company, engine company 225, we responded in that day. We got there just after the collapses had occurred. From there, I was relocated into another unit that I used to work in, the field communication unit. It's very unique in the logistics and the communication, the record-keeping of the scene going on. I think it's really important for them to remember, remember because they weren't around at the time, so this is a good time to educate them on what happened back then. They have to be aware of that and bring this forward with them.
This event makes me feel super happy, but also super sad because a lot of people died and a lot of people risked their lives so that they could save people. So, that's why I think it's very important.
I was employed by New York City Transit, I was part of their emergency response system. My service took me to the subway, which was directly under the World Trade Center. Due to my service down there, I came up with a rare form of cancer. I survived it. I thank God I'm still here today. I had a cousin, George, he was a detective second grade. He lost his life due to three different cancers. He was working at the landfill when they started removing the debris. There was a lot of people that didn't have closure and wondering what, what happened to their loved ones. One of these stories about my cousin George was he found a wedding band. Through the inscription on the inside of the band, he was able to find the spouse to the rightful owner of that ring and return it to him. What this means to me all is the opportunity to be the voice of the people that I served with at Ground Zero that are no longer here that died from cancers related to 9/11. So, I try to honor them and keep their memory alive.
As we finish up with the tour, I realized that a lot of firefighters died helping people get out from buildings. So, I thought that that was really cool and really special.
When I came out of this museum, I felt happy and I felt like thankful for the people who helped in 9/11.
Some of those people from the, the first responders that you saw there will be at this event again to tell their story and to share their experience. They, they reside here in Utah now and I'm sure there's others in your community that will come forward as they hear about this and we want to share their story as well. So, just one of the, the things though, how do we pull this off? We will have over five hundred volunteers. There was a, sign up a website in a second, I'll give you a QR code, but we also, you can find information at majorbrenttaylor.com. We have sponsorships that help to purchase the material. Everybody who, who is part of this, there's no, it's not paid, it's, it's all free and we donate our time and effort into making it happen. But these are opportunities for local businesses to be a part of it, the county to be a part of it, for us to be able to, to pull this off and to have opportunity to, to share this amazing event. More information can be found again at the website, majorbrenttaylor.com. This is, we have information now getting out into the public, help us, there's three things you can do. You can join one of our meetings, we have three meetings coming up, June seventeenth. This is at the Spanish Fork Fairgrounds, twelve noon, we feed you lunch. Any member of the public, any, anyone who enjoys or wants to be a part of this is welcome to attend and, and be part of our team. But these are the next three meetings that we'll have before we pull off this event. This is the, the logo that we, that we have that will, you'll start to see more and more of, and I, this is everything that I had to present. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Any questions?
No, I'm just thrilled and excited that. No, I'm just thrilled and excited that we have the opportunity to have that come here to Utah County. Ironically, I was at Weber State on campus when I found out that the towers had been hit and fell, I was walking to class that morning and got a phone call. And when I got to class, they had the TVs on, so I was a Weber State student when that occurred, but having the opportunity, I'm really excited to be able to walk my kids through that, right? Their dad was on a mission in Russia when 9/11 occurred and so he had no news coverage, he didn't see any of those images. And so, I think it'll be a great opportunity for me not only to bring my children through but for our community to have this, so I'm going to not be offended that we're the fifth county to get it, but we're just grateful that you're here. And that our students and our communities will have this opportunity and it really is an honor for us to get to host it at our fairgrounds.
Thank you.
Thanks Johnny.
All right, thank you guys, appreciate it.
Okay, moving on to the consent agenda, is there any of those seven items that you'd like to hold for discussion? And then of the four regular agenda items, number one?
Sure.
And I don't need to hold number three, I just wanted to say that I had a phone call with Dr. Smith and he was recommended to us from Congressman Mike Kennedy and I was very impressed with him and his background, I think he'll be a great representative and the Board of Health unanimously recommended him, so, and I support that.
So, that name there, it's obviously in the agenda, but not there, but councilman, Dr. Scott Smith. I also serve with him on a garbage board and agree with what you say, he's wonderful, so.
Number four for me.
Yep, thank you. Okay, so hold one, hold four, as far as closed goes, we'll hold five, strike six, strike seven and hold eight.
Okay, we will not be holding anything on the consent agenda and on the regular agenda, we will hold number one, hold number four, with number three, we're the name of Dr. Scott Smith. Then as far as closed, we will hold number five, strike six, seven and hold number eight.
Okay, as far as item number one, appreciate you being here. I attended two HOA meetings last week in different capacities and yours was much more pleasant than the second one. So, appreciate all of the efforts and staff's time on this and so I just mostly wanted to highlight us getting to a great resolution, hopefully to be able to help out your HOA. Anything else that I might have missed?
Oh, that's great, it's a denial, but that's a good thing for you, so, usually not the case, but yeah, thanks for opening your home to us, we're glad to help. And Dell, where is Dell's here, wonderful, Dell's been very instrumental in getting us here.
Thank you, thank you. I'll entertain a motion.
I'm moved to approve item number one.
I'll second.
Motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And then four.
Number four, I'm so excited to see this on here. This is one of my first projects, it's taken longer than I thought, but yeah, very exciting. Our jail kitchen staff is incredible, they produce all the meals on wheels every single morning, they feed themselves internally, the sheriff's office, and we are now adding a tool of, those who earn the privilege will have the opportunity to leave with a food handler's permit, which helps us, you know, with recidivism. You know, people in those situations, you know, it's a low barrier for us to maybe take an hour and a half class and pay 30 bucks, but for them, it's a struggle that sometimes cannot be overcome, so the fact that we're able to have them leave our, you know, justice system with additional tools is very exciting. It helps our local businesses, you know, food handler's permit is required to work in Utah restaurants and fast food and I'm very excited for this. It's taken a lot of people, the health department was very instrumental in getting us the curriculum, you know, to the fact that we can load the PowerPoint and the curriculum onto their tablets so they can, you know, do homework and things in their cell and awesome program. We have two or three people who are on track to be done in the next two or three weeks, so we might have our first graduate of the program here soon and yeah, I'm just very excited. Couple thanks, Chris Nielsen and Jay Call at the sheriff's office, Tyler Plou at the health department and then Carolina has been very helpful, so I'm very excited for this program.
Yeah, well done, I think it's a great, a great program. It is frustrating how sometimes a simple thing takes a lot of time in government, but well done.
Yeah, great idea, great seeing it through.
And with that, I will motion to approve item number four.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and now is the time where we will address public comment, is there anyone that would like to address the commission? Okay, seeing none, we will go into closed session, thank you everyone.
And a shameless plug for municipal and school board races, make sure you file by Friday, we have over 150 applicants already, so that's great.